Our second introduction is a face that is familiar to all of our council members because we did go through a pretty extensive interview process. And James Ayers was one of our three final candidates. And he spent a full day with me and a partial day is with everybody. And hopefully, we asked the right questions, they got the right answers because we did hire him. And tonight, we are here to approve his contract. Let me tell you a little bit about James. His most recent assignment was with the Foothills Regional Commission where he was the Director of Community and Economic Development. Prior to that, he was Town Manager of Manio, General Services Director of the City of Asheville, Assistant Town Manager and Director of Engineering and Public Works in the town of Bluffton. That's in South Carolina, just down the road from Hilton Head. He's earned his BS in Engineering Science from Vanderbilt University. Go Gators! That's my school, yeah. That hurts, doesn't it? Masters Administration from Central Michigan University. And he's a credentialed manager with International City County Management Association. That was one of the criteria that we were looking for is that we wanted somebody who was credentialed in the trade. The ICAAM, is that right? ICAAM, credentialed manager is a very important credential, particularly in town government. That signifies that you've gone through extensive training, taking a lot of classes, extensive background in town management. You put forth the effort to become more than just a manager, you become a credentialed manager. One thing that jumped out at me as I was looking through all the resumes, particularly James, he had a series of questions to answer. And his answer to one of the questions really appealed to me and I think drove a lot of my feelings about him. And let me read that to you. "As a leader, manager, and supervisor, I work hard to influence, motivate, coach, and provide support to our team members as we work together to serve our community. I foster a true environment of collaboration." Those really struck a chord with me because that's what we do here. We work together, we collaborate, and we do great things for the town. Council members, any of you wish to make any comments?
Well, I'm very excited, James, about you coming in. And I think one of the things, too, that caught my eye was your BS will come in handy in time. In more ways than you may have imagined, but sincerely, we welcome you.
Who can follow that, first of all? Jane is just a gem, and our gem. I'm really looking forward to working with you. We do have a great staff and a great town and so many things, and yet, we can also be that much better. And it's just such an exciting opportunity to have someone join our humble little group. So, thank you.
James, welcome. Your knowledge of the town of Lewisville and how prepared you were when you came in and how you knew more about Lewisville than some of us, I think, sitting around the table. So, I'm very excited to have you here and I can't wait to see your leadership of the staff because the staff is already phenomenal. But I think that under your leadership, it's going to be even better. Thank you.
Welcome aboard, James. Hit the ground running.
Well, he's already hit the ground bending over. I understand he was out Saturday with part of our beautification road cleanup crew. He was clandestine, so he was able to kind of participate without them knowing who he was. But I think somebody figured it out during the course of that. Anyway, James, you want to come up and say a couple of things?
I don't think this might be on the camera, too. Get him on the camera.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Mayor, members of the council. It's wonderful to be here this evening. I have to say that I've seen my visits here, how much the members of this council love this town. So, that makes it a real honor for you to select me and become the next Town Manager. I appreciate how much trust you're placing in me. So, I would pledge to serve this community honorably and with integrity. I also wanted to tip my hat to show our respect to the staff. I've had the lovely opportunity to meet most of the staff and also to peek behind the curtain and see all the great things they're doing behind me. So, it's going to be wonderful to come here and work side by side, shoulder by shoulder, with this wonderful staff as they serve the community. And lastly, I said the word "community." This is my fifth visit to the town of Lewisville. And I have to say to the members who are here, whether they be the audience listening, every time I've been here, it has struck me how nice, how friendly all the townsfolk have been. It really does my heart good and has such a warm welcome here in Lewisville. So, I look forward to the day coming to where I get to call myself the President here in Lewisville. Thank you so much.
Thank you, James.
Thanks, Tom.
I mentioned earlier we were going to approve your contract. We actually did that last week. However, we have to re-sign it because the Town Clerk informed me that I did it completely wrong. So, if you have a moment, if you'll get with Dora and sign it, and then I'll sign it, we'll notarize it, and it'll all be official.
We've already done that.
Unless anybody wants to change their mind. No? We're good? Okay.
Pam said they already did it.
They already ahead of me?
We've took care of it.
We've already taken care of it.
I'm not surprised.
May I have a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
So, I just want to make a comment for the record that, under your leadership and kind of you being a colleague of all of us, you've done a fantastic job in getting this person in place and helping us get it all together as a council. So, thank you very much, Mayor.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. It was a labor of love and one that we certainly will benefit from in our next chapter. This is the first opportunity for our public forum. If anybody in the audience wishes to come forward, as PJ is getting up and leaving, come forward, share their thoughts with the council, anything that may be on your mind. Please come forward now. We have a duo or a single? We have a single. We have a duo. We have one. Please state your name and your address.
I'll stay a few hours.
Okay. All righty. Name's Dan Frye. Address 165 Will Austin Cork in Lewisville. I have no complaint, just a comment concerning the proposed agreement between the town and the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Utilities Commission regarding the placement of the lift station. As our ready agreement, the commission, whose membership of appointees, each of the city of Winston-Salem and the county commissioners, has complete authority to set the cost of design, bidding, and construction administration estimated at $529,045. Ninety percent of this cost, or $476,140, is to be borne by the town. The commission will also set the final cost of the construction estimated at $2,775,000. The commission will cover $250,000. The remainder, $2,525,000, will be the responsibility of the town. This amounts to an estimated total of $3,1,140 to be borne by the town. Commission does not answer to the town council. All decisions will be made by the commission. I feel the town should have the ability to have some input once the agreement takes effect, especially considering the town's share of the expense. And that's it. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Dan. We all took note of that as well. One of the things the public may not know is that several years ago, we entered in an agreement with the Utilities Commission. And we are getting a percentage of the water costs, or the cost for water, that go directly into a town fund set up as our capital reserve, it's our sewer reserve, and it's dedicated for sewer construction. And over the years, we've amassed a little bit of money. We've been preparing for this for quite a while. Pam, our balance in there, you knew I was going to ask?
Five point six million.
Five point six million dollars right now in that fund. I understand exactly what you're saying. CCUC, they were good partners in this because they had the foresight, we had the foresight, to set this revenue source up so that we'd be able to provide the funding that we needed when the time came. All right. Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? If not, thank you very much. And those of you who are at home, if you'd like to send a written comment in, you can send to townclerk@lewesvillenc.net, townclerk@lewesvillenc.net. Dora, we have an appointment tonight.
Yes, sir. In front of, information was sent to the council earlier this week regarding an applicant for the Parks and Rec Board. The applicant was interviewed by town staff last Friday. The individual is Stuart Chamberlain, and staff recommends appointment to the Parks and Rec Board to fill one of the two vacancies.
Very good. Any questions for Dora? Not wanting to take a motion, please.
Does it move?
Second.
Mr. Franklin makes the motion. Ms. Foster makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Very good.
Thank you.
Down to new business. Pam, I believe you have our first item, which is, we were briefed at last week about an increase in our waste management costs.
Yes, it's ordinance 2022-050. This is to increase our budget line item for the collection of garbage and recycling by $27,000. Just briefly, waste management began to charge us a fuel surcharge in the spring. It seems to have leveled off at about 5% of our contract price. So, if you'll approve this budget amendment tonight and the price of fuel does not go up anymore, that should get us through the rest of the year. If the fuel surcharge goes up above 5%, I may have to come back later for some more money.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for Pam? Entertaining motion, please?
Motion. Second.
Ms. Hunt makes the motion. Ms. Foster makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous. Stacy?
Thank you, Mayor. Before you tonight is an agreement that we have been awarded. I think we talked about this at a previous council meeting. So, what the town did is we applied for, it's kind of like a grant opportunity, but what it is, is a rebate opportunity through the state in order to get money to install electric vehicle charging stations. And we were awarded that money, or that rebate that we will get. The way that it works is we would put the cost to install the two EV charging stations on David McKee, that, all of that installation and permits, everything is taken care of in the sum of money for that contract. And then, we submit paperwork to the state in order for them to reimburse us $20,000. So, tonight before you is the budget amendment for a total of $48,305. That is to install, get up and running the two stations, and then, we would get a rebate of $20,000 back from the state. We had toyed around a little bit with if we really wanted to go through with that. So, I did, the EV station, so I did do a little bit more research with Colite, the people who I've been dealing with for this, and ChargePoint as well. That is the company that we would go through for the EV charging stations. And they ensure us that we would get 90% back of whatever we decided to charge. That is totally up to the town. We will have access to software. It is a cloud-based software that we can choose really anything that the town wishes to choose of how we, if there's a time limit, how much we charge, availability, those types of things that we will have access to. They will come and train us with that software so we can manipulate that however council wishes. And then, they pay, ChargePoint will pay us quarterly is how we will get that revenue back to the town for whatever we charge for those stations.
Very good. Council members, this is a budget amendment for $48,305. Any questions for Stacy?
Yes, have a question, please. Stacy, when was the estimated time of installation for these two?
What happens next, if it is approved, is they set us up with a project manager. And then, from there, we set schedules of how long it takes or when they can get on site with the electrician as well. I don't think it shouldn't take years. We have a certain amount of time that we have that we have to install them once we signed that agreement. But it's just a few months initially. Once we get our schedules in line and can get the system up and running, they train us to run the system, we should be good to go.
A second question. When should we have already in place what we're going to charge so that we would be able to have all the necessary equipment for that?
By the time the stations are up and running, that would need to be decided so it can be programmed into the station. So, when someone goes up to the station with their car to charge, then ChargePoint has it already in the system to know what to charge.
So, they don't need a long period to know exactly what that's going to be for that hardware?
Right.
And I suspect we'll be making that decision sometime in the near future about whether we want to charge, whether we don't want to charge. And I think that'll be on our briefing for next month? Very good. Thank you, Ms. Walsh. Any other questions?
So, just to clarify, those two stations, how many vehicles will they charge?
Four. Each station has two ports for a total of four parking spaces, or four cars that it could charge at one time.
Okay. And how many parking spaces do we have there on David McKee?
I think it's probably around 10, maybe, a little less than 10.
Okay.
It's just along that frontage there, along David McKee.
And?
Two of the spaces are handicapped, accessible spaces.
And I believe Councilman Franklin had asked about changing curb stuff. How much changes are we going to have to do to that?
I asked that question.
Okay.
And their installation, the way that their stations are done is ADA compliant.
Okay.
So, they are aware of the requirement for that. And they assured me that these stations would be ADA compliant.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
One more question, please, if you would, Stacy. For the public especially, they're going to wonder what level this is going to be as far as, you know, how much they can, how long it'll take to charge and how many miles they will get for that. Can you give an approximate?
These are Level 2 charging stations. So, my understanding, it should take generally, Dr. Sadler, Mike could back me up on this, but generally about six to eight hours for a full charge. But usually, when people go to a public space, they're charging it in order to, you know, complete more of their travel until they can get to the next place. Or, you know, they're coming by to play in the park or walk downtown, maybe they've got some errands to run. So, I don't anticipate someone's car, you know, taking up the space for the whole eight hours for a full charge. But I think it would serve, you know, someone who was passing by. You know, we have a lot of people that come through here that are going west to see the leaves this time of year. So, you know, if that shows up on their radar as a place that they could come and charge, then they would have the ability to do so.
And an individual can expect to have a time limit that they can be there, probably not six hours?
That would be up for the council. If they wanted to place that time limit on there, you definitely could do that.
Thank you.
Very good. Anything else for Stacy?
I have one follow-up question. So, with these stations, will they be able to, the $48,000, that is, we still have the opportunity to get another $20,000. Is that right? Or the $48,000 is minus the 20?
No. The $48,000 is what we have to pay out of pocket to get the two stations installed and working.
Okay.
Then, we go to the state and get $20,000 back.
Okay.
So, that we get reimbursed $20,000 out of that $48,000.
After we've spent the $48,000.
After we've spent.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Very good. Anything else, council? Entertaining a motion, please?
Does it move?
Second.
Ms. Walsh makes the motion. Ms. Foster makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous. Pam, you have our contract that we have to approve.
Yes, it's resolution 2022-057 to approve the contract with Colite for $48,305.
Entertaining motion, please, council?
Please.
Dr. Sadler makes the motion. Ms. Hunt makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Stacy?
Thank you, Mayor. The next thing on the agenda is resolution 2022-061 for the interlocal agreement with Winston-Salem Forsyth County Utilities for a new Lewisville lift station. This wouldn't be the relocation of, but it is a new Lewisville lift station. So, we talked about it at our briefing at length about the project, what it would serve. Dora, if you would, the map, I've provided for you a map at your seat, and Dora's also going to display that up on the screen. But what I tried to do was I tried to, there was a lot of discussion about where exactly would this serve, how much of the town would it serve, how much is outside of town boundaries. And so, the map that I have prepared for you, you can see all of the, the black line is the boundary of the area that would be served. It's a little over 400 acres. The green area that you see, that is the proposed Great Wagon Road. And then, you can see the blue, the box is the new lift station, and then, the existing station that would be abandoned. And then, the gray area is the town of Lewisville, town limits. And then, that white portion is what is in the unincorporated area of Forsyth County. That is not currently in our town limits. That is the only area that would be served by this that is not in town limits. So, you asked at the briefing that we prepare for you some minutes, some history of the project that we placed for you in the small conference room upstairs. So, I hope you're all able to come and take a look at that. And I wanted to see if there was any further questions that we could answer for you tonight in regards to the interlocal agreement. What this interlocal agreement does is there's agreement, again, with us and the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Utilities in order for them to have a contract with Freezing Nichols, it's an engineering firm, to start design, this is a preliminary. So, what they would do with this agreement is start design of the project. From there, then, you know, they would go out to bid for constructions like normal projects, like we usually do. And then, that in itself would be a different contract for them to actually, someone to come and actually build the structure. So, again, I wanted to let you know and let you see kind of what it would serve. The zoning districts that it serves is RS 20 and then RS 40, both minimum lot sizes of 20,000 square feet, excuse me, and then RS 40 being minimum lot size of 40,000 square feet.
Very good. Any questions for Stacy? Ms. Hunt?
So, when I'm looking at the RS 40, thank you, Mayor. So, when I'm looking at the RS 40 that's outside of the town of Lewisville jurisdiction, are we looking at 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 lots essentially?
Yeah. If they, I mean, you know, scenario would be if they wanted to subdivide that further, they would go through Forsyth County for that white area unless they chose to be voluntary annexed into the town.
Were we able to negotiate or get any changes in the agreement as it relates to them becoming annexed into the town of Lewisville?
I did talk to Courtney Driver. She is the Director of Winston-Salem Forsyth County Utilities. And since we did our last interlocal agreements with the Tomahawk Creek Sewer Line Extension, a lot of the laws have changed. As far as reimbursements, that sort of thing, or, you know, them having, or us having reimbursements when people hook on to this line, a lot of those laws have changed. And so, she did not mention the area of being able to add any sort of other negotiations to the contract.
Any idea the total amount of acreage in that RS 40 area that's not currently in?
I do not know the total acres of that. I could find out for you.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions? If not, council will entertain a motion.
Or further discussion?
Or further discussion.
I want to back up for a second and make sure I'm clear about the big picture, if you will indulge, Mayor. So, this is us looking for us to?
Let me pause you real quick. I just, Jimmy just passed me a note. They don't have any volume, or they don't have any audio in TV6. So, I don't know if that's in your bailiwick to fix or TV6, which is the TV station that we broadcast on.
Okay.
We'll just verify.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Ms. Foster.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. So, we are being asked to approve the interlocal agreement. The briefing discussion amongst council, we backed all the way up to say, hey, what's the backstory here? Or let's be reminded of the backstory. I guess what I'm interested in knowing is after council's review of the various materials that staff provided, if there is any need for additional discussion about that. My position, quite frankly, is ideally, I would like to see us have one more month to put this, for example, on the November regular meeting agenda for approval. As Mayor mentioned, he introduced our new manager who happens to have some subject matter expertise in public works. I don't think it would hurt the process based upon hearing what CCUC or Winston-Salem Forsyth County Utilities had to say. They said, you know, they'd love to get this done as soon as possible for their agreement and their process. But when I asked them how much time they really, really needed, I heard them have a willingness to say, well, you know, for sure by the end of the year. So, if we allowed for just one more month for our manager to get on board, I know I dug into the materials, but I didn't even take a big bite at the fundamental agreement and the original 2016 sewer feasibility study, which was accepted, not adopted. So, I've just got some questions, and I'm sure perhaps they can all be addressed, but that's where a little bit of my angst is. So, just wanted to open that up to my colleagues.
Council members?
I feel like that's a valid request. I'm, I did not have the opportunity this week for various reasons to get by here like I had intended. And if there is not an urgency to get it approved this evening, I'd like to also consider us looking at it during briefing in November.
Stacy, you have been in contact with these guys. Do you believe that we have another month before we need to execute this?
Well, we met today with CDM Smith and NCDOT and the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Utilities Representatives for the portion that CDM Smith, that's a different engineering firm, that the city, or, excuse me, that the state is contracted with to do the water and sewer extension lines in the Great Wagon Road. They are at trying to complete 60% plans right now so they can continue to move forward. But they cannot move forward any further until essentially this interlocal agreement is signed in order for Freezing Nichols to start their design. So, then, they have marching orders to know what they're supposed to do as well. Because if there's not a lift station, then there is not a need for water and sewer lines to be placed in the Great Wagon Road.
So, we actually have two tracks that are occurring. One is the design of the lift station and the pipes associated with that, and the other is the Great Wagon Road.
Yes, sir.
And I think if I heard you correctly, did you say that the Great Wagon Road Design Group is there to stall now until this is done?
Yes, sir.
Council members?
I think what's been a little difficult is that this was all discussed with the previous council before several of us were serving. And so, it took a lot to digest it. I don't want it to be stalled. I don't know what would be changed. I guess it's hard to tell if you haven't had a chance to really get into it deeply. But I hate to wait, but.
What do you think, Fred?
I think that we probably need to move forward. If we wait another month, it's just going to tighten the screws down on the engineering firm that much more. But if y'all are hesitant to move forward tonight, then it looks like we need to sit for a month, so.
Ms. Foster, what specifically, or can you be specific? And, you know, we have, the intra-managers indicated that this is the agreement. And I'm not sure, and we can suggest some changes. CCUC basically said this is the agreement.
Yeah.
So, is this more, is it just more of you having an understanding of how this works? Or you have problems with the agreement?
I wouldn't say problems with the agreement. It's just, as Jane said, sort of knitting it all together and making sure with, you know, it's a large expenditure, it's a very important project. One thing that jumped out when I was reviewing the relocation agreement, one of the wheres, for example, is whereas lift station, whereas the lift station will be reconstructed in a new location and the size and capacity increased to accommodate, I'm reading wrong one, excuse me, the one before that, this is under witnesses on page, it's not paginated. Said construction necessitates the relocation of a lift station. I understood that one of the options was possibly just updating the current lift station and adding some capacity. So, the Great Wagon Road doesn't necessitate that something be moved. It was selection that the council made. So, I was looking at that language as being possibly inconsistent there.
The reason that this alternative was chosen by council at that time is because this first alternative served a much larger area. It serves the entire Great Wagon Road, as you can see, and it was cheaper than just upfitting the existing station that would not serve as much land and wouldn't upfitting the existing station that would not serve as much land and would not serve the entire Great Wagon Road, even if it was upgraded.
It seems like somewhere in there I had read that there was, there was an intention for the second option to include all of the Great Wagon Road. So that's all I mean, is just threading the needle here. And if, if, if the Great Wagon Road and all of the engineering is going to come to a full stop and they need us to do this tonight, first of all, that, I wonder about that. This was just briefed a week ago. So for me, I hesitate when I'm feeling a certain amount of pressure. I appreciate that there are people waiting, but by the same token, I just, I don't understand when an additional briefing, or not even a briefing per se, one more regular meeting.
Yeah, I mean, it would hold up. I don't necessarily know that, I mean, it's going to stop the whole entire project, but that is something that they are waiting on to be able to coordinate with Freezing Nichols based on this project.
Once we approve the agreement, would there be modifications to this, to this plan in any way whatsoever when they start to get into it and do their thing? I mean, is there the opportunity that they get into it and they realize, well, this doesn't need to be necessarily moved to this location? Is that a possibility or?
I would, I would think it could be a possibility, but the studies that they have already done in order to come up with those two alternatives, I would, I would think that that's why, they had reasonings for choosing this location as far as, you know, topography, how it drains, the flows.
That's been over 10 years ago, correct? Those, some of those studies were over 10 years ago?
No, the initial design was done back in 2018. The Freezing Nichols, that work was done in 2018.
Thank you.
And just for those of you who were on, the original sewer study and feasibility assessment was accepted, not adopted. That caught my attention because with our Louisville-Greenways plan, you remember, council made a specific choice to say we want to accept it, not adopt it. So I'm wondering, was, was there something about that language? No?
Can't say that.
Okay.
That just jumped out at me from, from the Greenway plan.
And it may have been, you know, the fact that at the time there were the three, there were three options, right? There was the upgrade to the existing lift station, as to say, or to actually a reconfiguring of it. I don't think it added any additional coverage. It was just, this one's got, something's got to happen with that lift station. See, they got to be fixed, you know, and at a cost of what, $750? It was a pretty high number. Or, and one of the other options was the one where the opportunities ran into some existing development. And I think the concern there was there were a lot of homeowners that didn't want to pay the tap-on fees. So that was going to be problematic from that perspective, and it left this one. So as for the accepting as opposed to adopting, I frankly can't recall exactly what the, what the reasoning behind that was on that. In terms of the money, I just want to remind folks that we have an underlying 2014 interlocal agreement with what was then CCUC that I think set forth. There were two, two kinds of situations that can arise. One of them is where the Utilities Commission wants to undertake a new project. And where they do that, our monetary commitment is less. But in this particular one, this is really viewed as the town initiating a project. This was not something that the Utilities Commission elect, you know, said, we need to come out and do something with this lift station. This is something where the town is saying, we need, we want to build the Great Wagon Road and we want to service it with sewer. And so that's why you're seeing this 90, 90-10 variant is because it's the towns, the town came to the Utilities Commission and not vice versa. So, you know, for what that aspect of it is worth.
Out of curiosity, and forgive my tardiness tonight, but what was the rationale? The person that you met with today, what is her position? I mean, what, why is she calling?
Today I met with an engineering firm, NC DOT and Winston-Salem Forsyth County Utilities for the Great Wagon, the water and sewer project portion for the Great Wagon Road.
But I thought I heard you, I'm sorry that I got my times wrong, but I heard you say you met with someone from Winston-Salem.
Courtney, I spoke on the phone with Courtney Driver. She's the director of Winston-Salem Forsyth County Utilities.
Oh, so she, she has the final say as the, and you said, and you made mention of some laws have changed. I guess I'm a little unclear about what that exactly means. What's the nature of the changes that has occurred that's limiting her ability to make any kind of concessions?
Dr. Tyler, I'm not 100% sure on exactly what, what law changed, but we did speak about, you know, kind of what Bo just mentioned with it being a town project. The difference, a little bit of difference between this one and the interlocal agreement we had with them for the Tomahawk Creek line extension was that, that was three parties. Tomahawk Creek, it was the town, the school system, and also utilities for that line for the new middle school. So that's, that's why that one was a little bit different as well and not just a 90-10. But then two, for this, she talked about a little bit of the benefit that we do gain from this line or from this new lift station is that those in the town that do hook on to it, that will be included in the original interlocal agreement in 2014 that Bo is speaking about of, and the mayor has spoken about, about that percentage that we get back every time in the town. So even though we would be using this funding out of our reserves, it still continues to grow with even hook-ons for this new line.
Okay. Yeah, it, when, when the person was here for briefing, giving his presentation, there seemed to be some, and maybe he's feeling some time pressure just because of everything else that's going on around him. But it appeared to me that they see some benefit to them for doing this project. I mean, I know we're, we're asking for it, but it felt like the Utilities Commission was going to derive some benefit from it as well as a, as a means for, they are wanting to move forward with it. Now, I may be reading that all wrong, but just watching him, observing him during his presentation, I just got the sense that, that he was anxious to move forward because he didn't, he didn't, he didn't want to tank this project, not necessarily because it didn't meet all the needs up and down the Great Wagon Road, but also because they were going to benefit. That may be a wrong read, I don't know. But, you know, that would be the only place there would be a potential leverage. And this person, and just hearing what you just said about this person, which is a rector, saying that, you know, there are no options available anymore, that just seems odd. That's all I, that's all I, that's just an observation.
Yeah, you know, I guess because we've been with this, doing this thing for so long and that without this particular scenario, we don't get sewer in, on the Great Wagon Road. Because the line capacity, Fred, stick with me here for a second, the line capacity and the lift station capacity will only handle what currently is on that line.
That is correct.
And so I'm not so sure if it's a matter of urgency from development standpoint, but it is certainly in the design of the Great Wagon Road. And if what I'm hearing is that the designers are stalled until we do this, then that's, that can be a significant issue. At least in my mind, it can be a significant issue.
So were we able to confirm if they were going, who was responsible for the, the lines under the Great Wagon Road? I know there was some concern about that last week. Were we able to clear that up and determine NC DOT was responsible for the green area for the lines underneath the roadway?
Connie James, she is the one that's over the Great Wagon Road project. She wasn't able to be on the meeting today. So her, myself, and Todd Lewis with City County Utilities have an, have an additional meeting set up to confirm that. I recall there being conversations about NC DOT taking on that and it being part of the Great Wagon Road project, but I have not been able to 100% confirm that with her because she wasn't able to be on that meeting today.
So Mayor, my, my thought process is with the inconclusiveness of the information, even if we had to call, you know, call a special meeting, I mean, we're asking the town to spend some feasible amount of money on this project. And it seems like there's some answers, some questions that can be answered because there's still some, some questions that we have regardless of the negotiation, negotiations on the contract as well as, you know, Connie answering the question about what's going on underneath the roadway. I would go back to G. Murray's suggestion of postponing this until a later date.
Well, specifically, I said November. Yeah, I would imagine, just as I said, having just one week for the review, I can't imagine that the questions can't be answered, certainly by briefing and at the absolute latest at the regular meeting in November.
Well, let me, I think at least I'm not hearing any advocates for moving forward at this point. So let's at least be prepared to make this decision at our briefing, which is three weeks. Okay, and so that three-week delay. And I want to say this without being critical and please understand from where it's coming from. If we had known there were significant questions or issues that weren't able to be answered or folks still had some decision, decisions to make based on new information, we would have had somebody from CCUC here tonight so they could have answered those questions for us. And so, again, I'm not, I'm not being critical, I'm just saying that in anticipation in the future, if we have questions, let's, let's make sure that we have the resources here to deal with those questions rather than pushing off a project or not making a decision.
And I, I appreciate that and I feel the need to respond. Part of the process for me is, as you mentioned earlier, the collaboration and, and hearing from one another and the staff did a fantastic job. I sent Dora a thank you note for, for laying out the material and being so organized with, with laying it out. So we've, we've been working at a hot pace and we've been doing a lot of good work as a council. And so I did my best to pull the information together and I, I look forward to having some discussion tonight. So it wasn't that I had specific things I needed answers for, I just wanted to have some further discussion and I thought it was reasonable with our new manager coming on board and what I heard at the briefing from the CCUC Winston-Salem folks that another month would be consistent. The new information that Stacey just provided about a phone call today that said that they were saying X, Y, Z, I didn't know that. I just heard that today. So with all due respect, that, that was my orientation, so.
I understand.
Thanks.
Hey, we have a motion, please, to postpone.
I want to make a comment. My comments had nothing to do with moving forward or not moving forward. My comments really were about a concern, if it's true that somebody's hands are tied as a result of rules, regulations, laws, statutes, or whatever, then that's fine. If there is, and I don't know if there's anything else going on, some other motivation out there, then, you know, that's why I was raising the questions is, I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem moving or not moving tonight. But I am concerned that, you know, the person who has the final, the arbiter on this thing is saying that, you know, nothing can be changed in a, in a, in a contract where negotiation's going. And I mean, if it's true, it's true, so that's what I'm responding to.
Very good. If anybody would like to make a motion to postpone this until the November briefing.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
It's a motion by Ms. Foster, second by Ms. Hunt. All those in favor of postponement, say aye.
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 Yep. Fred said aye.
Yeah, Fred and I said aye.
Oh, excuse me, I missed the aye here.
Very good. So that is a one, two, three, four to two with Mr. Franklin and Mr. Horn in opposition to postponement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty. So I guess we're to a really exciting part of the schedule now. Jeff, I'm glad you're here. I'll introduce you here in a second. Folks, we've been working for the last, oh, six weeks, eight weeks or so to come up with a plan to put solar panels on the Mary Alice Warren Community Center. We've reviewed several, actually three different proposals. You all have had the opportunity to look at those. We, we had an option of three different output proposals from Mr. Redwine's company. And the option that we chose was the highest capacity that we could provide. So I'm trying to think if there are any specific questions about this. Jeff, why don't you come on up? And if any of the council members have questions, by the way, your last name is my favorite.
With the company, so Red Group is, stands for Renewable Energy Design Group, but Red works and it's also the grid in Spanish, so.
Folks, any questions?
Good evening. I have a couple of questions. If the roof has to be replaced, what is that process and how does that work? So that's question one. And then I'll kind of give them both to you and you're welcome to. The other one is, I believe I recall, I cannot recall from all the numbers that we looked at last week, but can you refresh my memory on this 121,000? When the turnaround time is that we're going to actually kind of break even on this?
Yes. So to answer your first question, with it being such a new roof, there, well, basically there's two options. One, you would take everything off, re-roof and put it back on. The other option would be, and what I've seen a lot, is when you have a system go on a new roof, basically it's adding kind of a protective layer above the existing shingle. So you're not getting weather, you know, you're not weathering underneath the panels. And so I've seen situations where we've actually roofed the other portions of the roof, re-roofed those without having to, to address. So those are basically the two options that you would have to go.
And these are flush mount?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
Can you explain to me, explain, are we talking about one inch, zero inches, five inches? What, what is that?
About four inches from the, so, so flush mount would be if we're at a 32-degree pitch with the roof, we're going to be, you know, in parallel with that about four inches. And then you've got about an inch and a half worth of frame on top of that. And so, you know, the, the top side of the panels is going to be here. And that's basically to help with airflow. Electrons like it cool, ironically enough. So having that airflow throughout there helps, helps with production.
Fantastic.
I would need to-
Recall the second guy, because I'm not sure.
I would need to look at the proposal, but it has, it has that in place. And I do have it up here on my phone, so.
All right. And Dr. Tyler, you may recall, because I know you-
I think the break-in was eight years.
Okay.
And it depended on, you know, rebates and all those things coming through.
Correct.
They came through, it was about an eight-year.
Thank you.
Which is pretty fantastic for, especially with dealing with, with nonprofit. But that's taking advantage of the Duke rebate and as well as the, the new Reduction Act that has been placed in, it allows to have basically a tax credit for nonprofit entities to be taken on that, so.
The information you provided to us was very well documented. I appreciate that, by the way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Got a couple. Hi.
Hi.
Thank you for all your work and I'll, I'll speak to what Melissa said earlier about our mayor's work with our, our new manager. Mayor has been heading up and bird-dogging this, this project with you, so thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
It's a big deal. So a couple of questions, when I look at your contract, you referenced that in all caps, no battery backup is, is being provided, of course. So I assume that everything that is put forth in the contract as stated, it still provides that option should and if we want to do that down the road technologically wise, et cetera.
That is correct.
Okay, so nothing would preclude that. So it's my understanding that, and just for, for disclosure, we have a residential solar system at our, at our home. And it's my understanding that installers typically use one manufacturer for their products and materials. Could you just speak to the process that you guys utilized for making your selections? Because I think you guys were our low bid, thank you very much. But by that same token, we have a 25-year manufacturer's warranty on the panels. Could you just speak to the material and how you go about selecting that to ensure?
Absolutely. My installers would love it if we just used one flavor of technology, but we, we like to keep them on their toes. And so there is a few different to me because it's, there's, there's a variety of options out there and depending on the goals and objectives of the client, we may have one option or the other that may, may work better. option or the other that may, may work better. And and batteries fall into that quite a bit. In regards to the inverter um manufacturer, um that to me is the most critical part. I mean, all of it's critical, but that's, that's the moving part. That's the brain of the system where you're taking the DC power from the solar panels and converting it to AC power where you're using that inside the facility. And so that's, that's the workhorse. That's the engine of the, of the system. And so um, that is one we, we have a very limited number of uh of folks that will work with uh on those, because that is a very critical component. Panels, we choose um companies that have been around for a long time. I've, I've out of the tens of thousands that we've installed, I, I mean, I, I don't, you don't have panel failures. There's no moving parts in those outside of you know, a physical damage or something happening like that. So um, I'm not sure I'm answering your question.
You answered it with the first sentence. Thank you. You got it. Thank you very much. And then finally, um you re- you referenced the whole business of delays. And I know you can't answer this per se, but we've all had experience with a lot of the projects that the town's been working on with delays from supply chain issues, et cetera. Is, do you have any sense of um what things are gonna look like with the trend lines for how we might be impacted by any possible delays?
There's a particular utility company in mind that may or may not be the uh main focus of the delays uh within the interconnection process. Um, and so that to me, I don't have any supply chain issues right now. Again, I'm gonna knock on wood. Uh, but they're um going through the interconnection process um with anything over uh a twenty KW system uh is much more lengthy. And so we actually um have uh looking to to start on that already uh to get that uh in process, just to to be able to have that in a, in a early. But but to tell you, you know, as I said, normally, it's, it's weather delays or things like that that would be a minor setback. And uh but the, the interconnection with utility is the main, main thing that we start on very early on in the game to try to have that, that ready to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if there is a delay, are we talking about two weeks, three months? What, what are you, what would we expect if you do find that there is a delay with that other vendor?
With the utility company, um, I'm afraid if I gave you a day, I would, I would be.
For sure.
Making something up to tell you that.
What are you seeing just industry wide?
So I have them uh approved in a matter of, well, you know, over twenty KW, I mean, it's probably gonna be three to to four months.
Okay.
Worth of process um on a, um, and then, you know, could be five to six pretty easily.
Okay.
Um, that's, that's what we're looking at most likely.
And and Mayor, if we approve this this evening, that's something that they, you guys would get started on pretty quickly. So we would have it up by summer at the late, you know, June, July, by summer.
Oh, I would, yes. I, I would hope to have it installed by NQ one.
Okay.
Jeff already has the letter drafted to get the Duke rebate, waiting for our approval before it drops in the mail.
Yeah.
Okay. One question, please. Thank you for being here tonight. So these panels would cover the entire roof and would not be visible from the street?
They will not cover the entire roof. They will cover a good uh a part of the section, but it will be on the back uh of the facility, yes, facing uh southwest. And so they would not be visible from the street.
Jeff, one quick question. I know with some of the initial designs, the first set of designs we looked at just had the panels on the, on the primary roof. But with the uh, the larger capacity, we're adding panels on the porch roof. Were you able to look at the schematics, the architectural schematics and make sure that that, that roof is, I know we, we reinforced the main roof, but I, we, we weren't anticipating putting panels on the, on the porch roof.
Yes, um, and we're talking three and a half pounds per square foot. Uh, and so it's a very light load. Um, so you know, very seldom do we run into a situation where there needs to be reinforced, especially in a new build. Um, but yes, we did, we did take a look at that as well as the electrical.
And then when we, I, I'm assuming that we're, though some type of conduit will run, um, I guess it runs under the roof to connect the whole system.
Correct. We, we, we go um typically into any attic space or in, in, you know, as cleanly as possible uh to have our conduit down. And then the point of connection uh is there relatively close uh where I think some, some forethought was put into to having some disconnects and things put in place.
Got you, got you. Stacy, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, I am in full support of the contract, so.
You don't want to postpone this one?
No, full stop there. But I, is it acceptable if I ask Jeff about Councilwoman Hunt's request about the town?
You're a council person. It's, it's appropriate you ask any question you want.
You, you had asked for this, these folks to take a look at another.
Yeah, we did.
Okay, could you just, would you mind giving us an update or does that need to wait?
We looked at that. It wasn't, it wasn't gonna generate enough power to be able to justify the cost. The way the building is situated with the levels of roof.
Thank you.
We couldn't generate enough power to really make it worthwhile.
That's all I got.
Though the panels easily damaged, for instance, in a, in a hailstorm, quarter sized hailstones.
Um, they are, they're, there, there is a uh a funny, funny you should ask that. There, there's a rating on all of them that say they, they withstand uh three quarters of an inch or a half inch hailstone up to ninety miles an hour. And I always visualize who gets to stand in a wind tunnel with a, with a hail gun shooting at panels to test them. And I didn't realize that was a job offer out there. But um, so yes, they are. And and I'd add that I, I started in this industry in North Texas where it hails every spring. Uh, and so I know those systems and people that I've kept in touch with that have had them up for thirteen, fourteen years uh and and have not had damage. If it can break a car window, yes, it could break a solar panel. Um, and so that's where it would fall under uh an insurance, an insurance claim, just like a roof would.
Stacy, I think you had a couple of questions too, didn't you?
Yeah, the main thing that I um was just scheduling tonight um as far as the building and it is a facility that is being used by the public. We do have programs there. Um, we do have rentals and events on the weekend. So um, I was just mainly thinking as far as scheduling uh for when the construction would be taking place. Um, we had a scenario uh most recently that we were able to kind of um move around some rental spaces in different rooms, in different parts of the building. So the construction and the rental wasn't interrupted. Um, and so I was just thinking maybe like a kickoff meeting um that we could get in the frame for our facilities manager to take a look at our scheduling. Um, so it would, nobody would be delayed, be delayed.
Will there be interruption of the internal usage of the building? Okay.
No, ma'am. Uh, the power, nor um, no obstructions, nor power outage. Um, so we should be able to make every, all of our connections with the building live and functioning as it, as it should.
Any other questions?
Is there any reverse transfer of power in this system?
Yes, uh, I think I understand what you're asking. So uh, you, as you're producing power in real time, it goes into the building and looks for a load. So if it's daylight and lights are shining, then it feeds that breaker and any other loads that are there. If you're producing more uh and that the building is consuming, then it will go back out onto the grid. And that goes through what's called a bidirectional meter uh that we'll have in place. That's the interconnection process I spoke about with utility. And so that actually gives you a credit.
Okay.
On your utility bill. It's called net metering.
Right.
Excuse me, Mayor. Can I just say one thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, according, if I read correctly, to get the financial assistance with the credit, you, you can't place, place the panels in service before January first of twenty twenty-three. So I just want to make, you said you might, you might be ready by the first quarter of the next year. And I just want to make sure that we're aware. We don't want to put them in service before January first. Okay.
Correct. Yes. Um, yeah, then that would be for the uh, for the federal.
Exactly. Yeah, okay. I just want to make sure.
Any other questions?
One more, Mayor. Thank you for acknowledging. Is it, are you local?
Yes, I could see, well, I could see my house, my property uh when you had the map up there. I was trying to find it, but.
Thank you.
Yes.
So when something goes wrong, we know where he lives.
That's right.
Very good. Any other questions? If that will entertain a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Foster makes the motion. Ms. Walsh makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous. Jeff, we have a contract that we will sign and give to you right now.
Um, actually, we need to, that, I think you were just approving the budget amendment. Now you need to approve the contract.
So Pam has a contract that she'd like you to, like for us to approve now. And that is the uh Resolution two oh two two oh six two awarding the contract.
Motion.
Any questions?
Oh, sorry.
I think you made the motion, Ms. Hunt?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Hunt makes the motion?
Second.
Second, Ms. Foster. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
So we'll sign it um after the meeting and I'll upload it to you tonight.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. I look forward to working with you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jeff. Stacy, talk to us about trees.
Yes, sir. So tonight before you, we uh spoke a little bit about this at the briefing. Um, Ecologic, John Hannah, uh who we use, our contractor, um, he and our Public Works Director had uh taken a look at some trees that needed to be replaced around town, some on Shallowford Road. Um, some in the annex parking lot that were having, that we had to take down because they were dead, uh replacing those. Um, you can see the list in your packet uh for a total of three thousand six hundred and eighty dollars. Um, that includes the purchase, uh the installation uh and maintenance uh for, warranty for a year for the, for these trees that are on this list. Um, this also does include the chestnut oak um that was requested to be planted at the Mary Alice Warren Community Center in honor of her parents. And she's, she's already given us the wording uh that she would like to have out at that tree in, in honor of her parents, so.
Very good. Any questions?
Yeah, I've got one for you, Stacy. Um, my recollection is that list, wasn't there one something about a traffic circle in the middle of a traffic circle that's on the list?
Uh, it is right outside of, um, it's not in the middle, but it's, it's in the town's right of way, a tree that we maintain. It's uh right there at the food line, the big traffic circle, the bottom one.
Okay, I misunderstood how it was written up. I, I mean, the reason I was asking, we got lights in the middle of the traffic circle.
Right, yeah.
I missed, I misunderstood or misread it, but, okay, I'm good.
I, I will mention too, there was one on the list um that was in one of the beds closest to the Great Wagon Road, the Great Wagon Museum on the other side of the square. Um, we, we wanted to hold off on that one. We didn't want to plant the tree. And then in a year and a half, construction start on the Great Wagon Road and it'd be wiped out. So we decided to not replace that one currently. Um, but if we see that it's not gonna be impacted, then we may want to replace that one in the future.
Any other questions?
Uh, yes, please, Stacy. Could you give me a visual of where the one that Mrs. Warren, the chestnut tree that she has bought in honor of her parents, exactly where it is?
Yes, we actually, um, there were six different, we, we made a map with six different dots on it uh recommended by John Hannah of good places that that tree could be planted. Uh, that went before the Louisville Beautification Committee and they chose, um, if, if you're looking, if you're, well, okay, if you're standing in the circle uh where the big trees were that we saved, um, and then you have a parking lot that goes around. Um, it's over in uh the little grassy area, kind of where it forks between um the parking lot and, and the entrance to Jack Warren Park. Um, that's where uh the Beautification Committee chose to, to want to plant that tree for Miss Warren.
Any other questions? entertain a motion, please?
So move.
So Ms. Walsh makes the motion, Mr. Franklin makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, Stacy, now the administrative reports.
Yes, um, so starting with events at Shallowford Square, um, we have a busy October. Um, of course, we've had um a movie night, or no, not a movie night, it's coming up. But we've had a concert um at an E-cycle Day last weekend. That, that went very well. Um, so coming up Friday, October fourteenth, that's tomorrow, there's an outdoor movie night featuring Halloween Town, which is one of my favorites. Um, concessions will be available for the movie. Uh, it'll start around dusk. Um, so just please advise that it's getting dark earlier, so the movie will start a little bit earlier than normal uh in the summer months. Um, next is a special recycling event on October twenty-ninth from nine AM to one PM. That's hosted by our Environmental Conservation and Sustainability Committee. Um, you can go to the Town of Louisville's website um under the event page and click on that event. That will give you a list of what they are accepting um at that special event um on October the twenty-ninth. And then on into November, um bulky item pickup will begin November seventh. Uh, we do encourage residents to put out everything prior to six AM on Monday morning. Uh, we don't necessarily know what routes wa- waste management will choose um or where, what part of town they'll, they'll choose to start. Um, so that's why we ask for those to be out by six AM Monday on November seventh. And then also on our town's website, there's a banner at the top that, that mentions bulky item. If you click there, that will let you know what is acceptable for bulky item pickup. Um, and then lastly, Town Hall will be closed on Friday, November eleventh in observance of Veterans Day.
Very good. We're coming to the end of our season.
We are, yeah. The last, last weekend.
Big kudos to Stacy Howard, if you're watching, which I suspect you and Tom are. All the comments that we hear, everything, everything that folks are saying is that this was probably our best season ever. Uh, the bands were off the chart. And once again, Stacy Howard, you did a fabulous job. Moving on.
Okay, so um if you'll notice the gentleman in the back, he is with us tonight from Clark Powell. Clark Powell is the uh contractor that we have used to upgrade our cameras and our audio visual equipment here in council chambers. So if you'll notice the camera back there, um, and then also a camera over there. So we have a ton more capabilities than we were ever able to do so. We can zoom in, we can zoom out, we can reach um different areas, the crowd, the podium, if we have a public speaker. I mean, it, it's a awesome, awesome um system. There's an iPad that we'll be able to use that anybody um can work the system from anywhere in the room um or back in the um recording room. I don't, I don't know really what we call that, but um, so we're really excited about it. Um, Warren is here tonight with us um making sure that everything is going smoothly because staff has not had a chance to actually be trained on the system yet. But from what I've seen, um, it is leaps and bounds uh than, than what we're used to. Facebook capabilities, Zoom capabilities, so um, I'm really excited. But I wanted to give you an update tonight that everything has been installed. Um, we're working out a few little bugs, especially with Facebook. Um, but everything has gone good so far.
So I was leaning into Mayor asking earlier, so when we have a person up here, like Adam was up and you were introducing him. So talk me through, the new system would capture that person?
Yes, that camera over there. Can you see it moving?
Yeah, oh wow.
He's got it moving.
Okay.
Um, it can zoom in to a council member that's speaking. It can zoom in to
Excellent.
Either table, well, I mean, you know, various locations, but specifically, yes, it can zoom in to the public speaker um to show them more so on camera than just, you know, essentially seeing the back of them um is what our old camera back there has done.
So you just want to reinforce why this was happening for our stakeholder and the, the consumers of our information to enhance their experience.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
I have a, I have a question. Um, and I'm not a technology person in any ways whatsoever, so so these cameras will move when a person is talking. Who controls that? The camera or a person?
It can be controlled by a staff member or communication specialist. She actually could remote in and control it. Um, it's, it's, it's ver- so much more upgraded technology than, than what we're used to. But there's an iPad um or a computer back there in, in that room that you can click and do all kinds of stuff with it.
And if I recall, we talked about getting smaller ones of these things. Will that happen? What's the plan for these things?
Those are the new monitors.
Oh, okay.
Um, we, we are still looking for um a different something to sta- stand for the monitors. So we haven't got that far yet, but um, yeah, those are the new monitors.
They are new, I can tell, because I didn't have to worry about turning them off. Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Microphone push to talk or push not to talk is working much more, much better.
And the sound uh seems to be better.
So are we pushed to talk?
It depends on how it's set. So it's still, okay.
Yes, I've got a red light on mine.
That means that you're live.
Okay, I'm live. I'm good to know I'm alive.
Yeah.
Alrighty. Stacy, bring us up to date on our previous meetings and the actions we took.
Yes, so there was a special called meeting on September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two um where the council approved Resolution twenty-two-two zero five-six uh which was the rebate agreement that we hold with the state uh for our EV charging stations. Um, and then also at our last meeting, October sixth, the briefing and action meeting, uh council approved ordinance two-zero-two-two zero five-two, a budget amendment for the street sweeping for four thousand six hundred and fifty dollars for an additional sweeping uh to help for cleanup from the hurricane that went through. Uh, Resolution two-zero-two-two zero six-zero uh for that, excuse me, that, the first one was a budget amendment. That one was the contract for um the additional sweeping. An amount of four thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. Um, and then also the approval of the town manager employment contract for um our new town manager. And then lastly, uh the council approved the board and committee. And then lastly, uh, the council approved the board and committee plans of work at their last meeting.
Ladies and gentlemen, as you know, we have two meetings a month. First meeting is the first Thursday. It's our briefing, but occasionally we do find the need to take actions at that meeting. When we do, we'd like to report them out at this meeting because those of you who are watching on TV six weren't attending the briefing, so that's what we did last week. We're to the second opportunity. If the fries have thought through any additional comments that they would like to make, this is an opportunity for that to happen. Alright, once again, folks, if you would like to make a comment, you can email it to our town clerk and that's townclerk@lewisvilleNC.net, louisvilleNC.net, and we can incorporate your comments. Uh, council members? Comments?
Yes, please. Um, you noticed that a lot of us have pink on again. I don't know how many years for the council has always honored that, um, in October. And I just wanted to say, there've been so many strides with improvement of diagnosis, especially early detection, but to please remind your loved ones or yourself to have your mammograms. And I want to say especially how handsome Fred looks in pink and several of us noticed that. Oh, and, and yes, thank you, Mike.
Sure. Sam was as close as I could get.
That's close enough. Summer colorblind. But, uh, thank, thank you for that. A special welcome to James and we look forward to meeting your, your wife and when you begin in a few weeks. And, um, other than that, for myself personally, it's been almost fourteen years, so I really want to encourage people that it's worth those tests and there's, there's so much hope out there if you have a diagnosis. Other than that, wish everybody a good evening and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Any other comments, council members?
I've got, I've got a quick question, maybe an ask. I don't know if this is doable or not, but I was reminded when Stacy brought up the bulky item pickup day. I know a lot of people in the community really look forward to that. Um, it seems that either I read or I heard, I don't know, it was through the ECSC, the Environmental Conservation and Sustainability Committee, um, if there would be a way to somehow forecast to the community that there are places that are charitable organizations that may be an alternative to putting something out at the curb. Um, it could be that, yeah, it's curb-ready and no one would, would take it, but, um, I think as I've driven around, I've seen some things that look like they could be reused. So, um, not sure what the, the town's position is on that and perhaps it's too late, but, um, I'm wondering if there could be something on channel six or, um.
I think that's a good, a good point, Jean Marie. And maybe in the newsletter, because there are, of course, Goodwill, there's Green Nest, that's a rather new organization, that we could have a list for people to also consider during the rest of the year even.
I think we could probably compile a list. Um, it might be too late for the new, the November, December newsletter, but, um, yeah, certainly on our other, other outlets, we could, we could try to get some information out to residents.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Well, then we do have an active community of pickers.
We do, right.
That if something goes out, uh,
That's true.
if you notice, you look in the neighborhood when it goes out, within two or three hours, about half of it has been picked through. So, um, there's that opportunity. Council members, I just need a little direction from you. Um, Dor and I actually both do. Back in April, we had a request by the, uh, I want to say it was the, the Share the Love Ministry and they wanted to do an event, um, this December at the community center. And they wanted to, um, see if they could apply for non-exempt status, or nonprofit status. I, we collectively completely forgot about what we said we would do, which was, we, at that point, had a moratorium, but that we were going to review the criteria for being accepted as a nonprofit. And then we were going to be able to, uh, send applications out to those groups. They could submit those applications and we would make a determination whether they qualified or not. Um, many, many months have gone by and we're still in the moratorium. Um, I had a call today from the, the, uh, the gentleman who does the, the Share the Love Ministries and he said, you know, I'm, I'm really, I'm on, I'm on it right now. Uh, if we're going to do it, we need to, to know if we can get the community center to nonprofit rate. So, um, guidance from you, well, the first thing I'd like to do maybe is we go ahead and end the moratorium because we do have the criteria.
Yes.
In fact, if anybody would like to refresh everybody's minds, the criteria was pretty straightforward.
Thank you. And that was accepted in June by the council. Item number two under E, E two has the criteria.
Yeah.
So we're kind of a bit at a, I'll, I'll say, um, I don't want to say cut all our pants down, not with two cameras working, but we were, um, we were, we did let this slide before, probably a little longer than we needed to do before we took action. So, um.
And Mr. Sutton's not the only one. Now, Mr. Sutton did not send a written request. Um, he just came to the council and requested verbally. But we do have, um, four others that prior to that, prior to the moratorium, had re- requested exempt status consideration as well. And what, if the council so chooses to lift the moratorium, we will have an application, because in the past, all they did was send an email or a letter saying, hey, we'd like to be considered, but we wanted a more concise form where everybody's provided the exact same information. So if the council chose to lift that moratorium, we would send the application to all of the individuals.
And then who makes the determination? Council?
That comes back to council for your consideration.
Although we have some very specific criteria now, so it can almost be a staff function.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
I would think staff recommendation.
Yeah.
So, um, the way I, the way it reads right now is that requests for exemption shall be considered at the next regularly scheduled meeting of the town council. Once these requests come in. So like if we got one tomorrow, then of course it'd be in your agenda briefing packet for review and then at the November regular meeting is when you would vote to approve it. But, um, and staff could make recommendations, but I don't think that's clearly spelled out in your policy.
I, I think too, um, council, part of the council determination goes with th- those nonprofits. Um, you know, it, it's, is it ref- it's reflected in our town code as well. And so when someone is, says added, it's a change to the town code, uh, which the council has to vote and, and adopt that. Now, staff would be more than willing to provide a recommendation if, if council chose to do that. Um, but, but part of this process as well may be, uh, to take a look at the ones that are existing on that list, um, of, of usage, how, how often they use it, uh, that sort of thing as well.
Yeah, I think we, we were going to do that.
We had talked about it.
Took the, the twenty or so and see if they, how, how frequently they were, they were using.
Looks like there's twenty-four and then we also had a, a question about that they have an office in Louisville. Like there were some nonprofits, Shallowford and some other ones that didn't necessarily have an office in the town of Louisville, but they served Louisville residents.
Right.
So the current usage policy or use exemption policy underneath number E two C says has an office in the town of Louisville, so I don't know if that's something we want to.
Well, they're all Oars.
Oh.
Or.
Where's that at?
Probably before the last one.
No.
E, E has Oar on it.
E, E two?
E two E.
Oh, I see, I see, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. I see it. E two E, okay. So that both suffices for or all of those things?
You have Oar before the last one, then those are all.
Everything, okay.
So we have two, I think, the first question, number one, is do we want to go ahead and lift the moratorium? And that, I would suggest we maybe want to go ahead and do that.
Yep.
Second thing is, those applications will go out. Um, unfortunately for Mr. Sutton, we would not be able to get an answer to it, uh, in a, in a timely manner. We're, his, he made his request to us in April and we're now in October. So, uh, I'm, I don't know what your pleasure is if we want to try to figure out how to make that, if he meets these criteria or, um, could, could staff go ahead and, and make that determination?
I think we need to make an exception for him because that's been, um,
Yep.
unfair this amount of time.
How would that impact our ordinance?
I was going to say, I'm sorry.
Vote tonight, I think though, I think what, if what I'm hearing is the vote would be to lift the moratorium, adopt this policy.
It's already adopted.
And then allow staff to make the determination as to whether this particular one meets the criteria, criteria. And then if so, they'll go ahead and do what they're want, they're wanting to do and then the town, the council will vote the next
November.
Next November to amend their ordinance to include that group.
If any future applications would come back to council, that this is just one exception.
Right.
And you just allow the staff to make the determination as to whether or not the, the requirements are met.
For this one, yeah.
I was going to say, if so, you know, we would, we could, he would follow that as far as his fee being waived or if it's on, he would follow the same fee schedule as a nonprofit would in the, in the interim.
Right.
To do that.
Pause, folks. Doctor?
I have something unrelated. Uh, uh, I got a text question, not, uh, so nothing about doing what you're asking.
Okay, let's, let's do, um, I'll make a motion to go ahead and, uh, lift moratorium on applications for nonprofit status to use our facilities.
Second.
Ms. Foster makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. I'd like to make a motion, second motion, that, uh, in this one situation for lapse of love, no, that's the euthanasia group.
Share the love.
Uh, share the love, share the love, yeah. Um, I'm sorry, but it is. Um, share, share the love, that staff be given the prerogative to get that application to Mr. Sutton and make a determination. If he meets the criteria and if so, apply the nonprofit rules to the event that he wants to have.
Second.
Okay.
I have a question. Are we saying that there are no other similarly situated organizations? I don't know. I mean, is there anybody else out there that somewhere between that, now and April, made a similar request?
There was four.
Yeah, there's four others that are outstanding, but, um, I have not heard from them in a few months. There for a while, they were calling about monthly to see if that moratorium had been lifted, but it's been several months since I've talked to one of them. But we would need, since we're lifting it, and I know we're making an exception for this one particular one, but we would need to send that application to those other four and let them officially submit their request to the council in the same format.
Could we, could we not just exempt all, all five that came into us since April?
If they meet the criteria?
If they meet the criteria.
Yeah, I agree.
And then start afresh or start, you know, new with the applications effective November one?
Yeah, I would think there would, there would still need to be, um, some sort of vote in November in order for you to add them to the town code. I mean, we could, we could go ahead and do that same process that we're doing with Mr. Sutton, but then in November, we could come back to council and, and make it official that they're added to that list for, in the town code.
I've got a second question. Um, if we do this, is, is what he is asking for is a one-time use of the facility or an ongoing, continuous use of the facility? What is he asking?
He's only asking for this year.
Yeah.
One time?
One time.
Use?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, when he made his request in April.
It's for like Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
It was for three days in December.
Yeah, but, but for a specific period in this year?
Mm-hmm.
Not, not three days next, in every year going forward or anything like that?
He did not mention that at that time, no, sir.
We have, we have a policy for nonprofit usage anyways, so like if they're using on the weekend, they have to pay a certain fee. So would that, if we approved these five, then we would have, like if he was going to use Friday, Saturday, Sunday, he would use Fridays, he would, there, we've already got a policy in place for that. Correct?
We have a fee schedule in place for multiple use.
Yes.
Yeah, that's such a prime time of year. How much of the facility would he be using for three days?
Um, I'm unsure. Uh, we would need to touch, we would need to ask Mr. Sutton that whenever we contact him.
He was requesting two rooms.
Which he would still have to adhere to the nonprofit policy. We're just, it, we're just granting him the exception to be considered a nonprofit.
Right, yeah.
Correct. Right, yeah.
And the, uh, I mean, I guess his usage would depend on, actually, I think he mentioned that he talked to Brian today and Brian said that there is no usage book for those days, as is right now. And then we could decide, I guess we could decide going forward, we wanted to let any one organization tie up three days, depending on the, the, the kind of activity we get. I like the revenue coming in from this one. Yes, I am mercenary. Any, uh, we have a motion and we have a second. I'll amend my motion to include all of the organizations, should they return their, uh, their application forms and be deemed qualified by staff.
And I'll second that.
Ms. Walsh accepts that modification? Any additional discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, folks. I know that was a curveball. I got it at four thirty this afternoon. Yeah, was, been embarrassed we hadn't responded.
So now, what I was asking about, this just reads awkwardly to me. I think that word is right. If, if, if you look at two and you read it, when you get down to the alphabet, A, B, C, D, E, F, it, it looks, seems to me there ought to be a statement that precedes those five things. F, I mean, six things, as in organizations that. Because this, I don't even know what this refer, he's an English teacher, I think, English or French or something.
I'm French, I don't have that, I don't have that language in front of me.
Oh, oh, okay. Yeah. It just, it just, it seems awkward. If you read number two and then read what follows, it just seems like it needs a statement in a colon that goes right before that, like organizations that. And, and then it says uses or regularly comes, it'd be, then you drop the S on come, but, but anyway, that's what I'm, that's what I'm talking about.
We'll, we'll fix that language up.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's all it is. It just seems awkward.
Okay. Thank you, folks. Anything else this evening? Alrighty, um, folks at home, thank you for staying with us so long. Folks here in the audience, it's always good to see your faces, all two of them tonight. We expect to have more with our new manager. He'll create all kinds of opportunities for residents to come in and hear the great things we're doing. James, um, officially November first, but I know you're already kind of touching base with staff and folks. I know you want to try to set up something with individual council members to, to get some of the guidelines and understand how they work and how they would prefer you communicate with them. Uh, so as we say, uh, Terry Four, Terry Fourth, Sally Fourth, Terry Fourth, Terry Forward.
I will look it up when I get.
Those of you at home looking for Terry Fourth is, move on.
Carry, carry on.
Yeah, carry on, move, carry on.
Carry on.
Very good. So folks, now that I've kind of made a babbling fool of myself, would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Move for adjournment.
Okay, Dr. Sadler, very good. So, um, Ms. Walsh makes the motion, Dr. Sadler makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We're adjourned this evening.